Tonight we convene this 21st of July meeting in Cleveland County Board of Education. I would like to announce that at our last business meeting, our board decided to include a moment of silence when we begin our board meetings each session. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone who's here to join the board in a moment of silence to honor our nation, state, community, and school system. Thank you. Ms. Miller, would you please, please?
Please, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Before we officially get started, I'd like to apologize for technical glitching, which I don't understand what's really happened. We've had some video or blowout, whatever that means, and everybody was desperately struggling today to get it fixed, but it was just impossible to do so. You'll have to follow your written agenda, and if we have some more out there, if you need one you haven't got, you can pick one up on our meeting desk there. We're happy to have all of you here. We'd like to recognize any special guests that we may have with us tonight. Anybody from, any principals who want to identify themselves or any of you here. If you will stand up, thank you for coming. Then we have the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants. I believe we have a couple out there in the audience. Thank you all for coming. Have any NCAE representatives or any other elected officials with us? Seems like a rather sparse crowd in the summer. Anyway, next item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. What's the pleasure of the board having the agenda for several days?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. It's been moved into second, and then we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is our time for public participation, and we have one speaker signed up tonight, Elvin Clark, Reverend Clark. We look forward to your comments.
Amen. Y'all took the clock down for three minutes, so I guess I just keep going.
My watch is working.
Our greetings to the elected school board members and superintendent officials. Addressed upon this evening on behalf of NACP concerning citizens of the community. Based on the statistics of Cleveland County and those of Cleveland County school system, there still exists many qualities in hiring as well as those who are disciplined in our school system. For the last three years, there have been advancements in the hiring practices of our school system. However, the gap in minority hiring is still a major concern for us. The unspoken rule is hiring is not just based on who's qualified, but as fit for school system, as per the principal. This concept severely limits the number of minority who has been hired at the level to make the decision to hire others. This school system reveals plague with hiring practices that restrict diversity in the classroom as well as in the off administration. Currently, there are approximately 71 principals and assistant principals within the schools of Cleveland County school system. There are approximately 62 quarters and nine non-quarters. Recently, Titus Hopple, a principal fellow from Cleveland County school system who served as AP in the Burn School District, applied for a position who was not selected because he was either not qualified, not selectable, or not best fit. These are concerns we have with the continued experience of minorities with qualifications not being selected for the program. Another concern of the NAACP and the current assistant of Cleveland County is the policy to address the 1.0 role GPA for our student athletes that continue to play sports on weekly basis. These students fill out stadiums and gymnasiums, but at the conclusion of their high school experience, these student athletes cannot attend Division I schools. At that, at this point in their life, they're faced with limited alternatives to continue their education and qualification for scholarships. Finally, we believe that this point or the number of minority students that attend Trinity One Academy and those that are chartering in the criminal system is currently a 3:1 ratio, while the ratio of minority students in the county is less than 30 percent. We in the NACP are concerned and concern citizens of the county are concerned about these issues. And what we come today to recommend to the board is that the diversity thing that was established a few years ago in some form continues to exist. To make recommendations to the superintendent of the school as well as the school board to close these gaps in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Elvin Clark. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from June 9th, 2014 business and work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 9th, 2014 business and work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto innovative leadership, we're pleased to have with us tonight, as always, the president of the North Carolina School Board Association and the state representative of the state school. So, I'm turning it over to take ladies first, for Ms. Miller to talk to us about NC SBA, and then Richard Hooker to talk to us about the state school.
Sure. Our last board meeting for North Carolina School Board Association was June 14th, and fairly typical board meeting. And just briefly, I'll let you know that we did receive legislative update at that meeting, but since that time, a lot of things have changed, and some haven't. We're still waiting on the budget to be approved and agreed upon by the House and the Senate, although what I've heard is that, quite honestly, they may just leave it alone without approving it because there is a budget already in place, and so if they do that, then, you know, no teacher raises, no, I mean, everything would just be the same as last year. But that's kind of the sort of inside scoop that I've been given, but who knows? It could change their meeting tonight, I believe. So, and you've all received legislative updates weekly from the association, so I will go into any of those. We did, Eddie Speaks, the attorney, one of the attorneys that is representing all of the school boards in North Carolina in the litigation, questioning or challenging the constitutionality of the opportunity scholarship. Eddie was there, gave us a report. Of course, part of the report that he gave us was that there was to be a meeting this past Friday to determine whether or not the Speaker of the House and the President of Protown would be allowed to intervene. But that meeting, I was told today, did not happen on Friday, and you probably heard the news that the group that will be issuing the money, the funds, the scholarships to those families that apply for the funding, that they have been told that they can go ahead and fast-track that money. So, what we're thinking is that the money will be issued prior to the August 13th day, which is when the summary judgment hearing is to take place. So, the money will go to these families before the judge actually has a chance to rule on it, and so if he decides that it is unconstitutional or decides to put a stay on it, the money's already out there to the families. So, things are moving very quickly with that. June Axtonson was also there. She, again, all of this was happening in part to some of the legislation that's already occurred, but she talked to us mostly about the budget, about her thoughts on the budget at that time, and also on common core. And of course, we know what the ruling has been on common core, and so that really is a moot point now. She continues to be extremely frustrated with our legislators, but she was able to visit with her. We also heard from two outside groups. One, Boy Scouts of America, have quite an interesting after-school program, that they're willing to partner with school systems to offer this at no cost to the school system. And we have some information. I think Richard actually pulled some of that together and passed on to the appropriate ones here, just in case we might get their piloting program in, I can't remember which county it is, in one of the eastern counties, that they're piloting this program. Yeah, to work with the school system there. I mean, it sounded, sounded really good. We also heard from a company that is actually, it's called Open Source Social Media, and they will monitor social media in our area to see if there's any, I guess, you know, you hear about chatter that's going on out there, and so they will actually monitor the chatter that's going on in your community to see if there might be some potential sources of danger to the students, to the school system. And again, we've got some information on that. I think that is going to be a company that the association will partner with, if it's something that we would be interested in, and it's another resource for helping to improve the school safety, then we would go through the association for that. Her reports from the Goals and Directions Committee, and the most significant thing that came out of that committee is our trying to come up with ways that the association can partner with the National School Board Association to help promote public education and to help us continue to keep the good news out there and to bring out the positives. Also, the Conference Planning Committee there and reported the most significant change for the state conference this November will be that the delegate assembly that has traditionally been on Tuesday morning will now be Tuesday afternoon. Excuse me, it will be Monday afternoon, it's moved from Monday morning to Monday afternoon. All the breakout sessions will be on Tuesday, and the recognition service on Tuesday night. They are really working hard to pare that down from like two and a half to three hours down to about an hour or so, which is, that's always been the biggest complaint that I think that they've received, and so that committee is working hard on that. So, that's, that's our day-long meeting in a very small, and I'm pleased to be there, and I continue to be very honored to serve not only Cleveland County but North Carolina and that association. Richard?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. It's also an honor to serve with my colleague at the State Board at the North Carolina School Board Association, where she serves as president, and I'm honored to serve as one of the members of the Board of Directors. Also, as a recipient of the Ronald Deamon, I also have the honor and privilege to serve as a member, as an advisory, ex-official, if you will, with the North Carolina State Board of Education. And as you see, I had somewhat, I presented to you this evening, a somewhat voluminous report. The chair has advised me to keep it somewhat short and abbreviated, so I will attempt to provide somewhat of an abbreviated overview of some of the activities that took place subsequent to my last report on March the 10th. I presented some of the activities and presentations and programs from January through March. This report reflects activities that occurred from the April meeting through July meeting, which the July meeting was a conference call. April, we had the privilege and the opportunity to attend, to go to the University of North Carolina at Pembroke to do a three-day review and overview of the state's strategic plan. And I provided a very abbreviated copy of that in the report. Certainly was much more in-depth, but part of the highlights of that was that the North Carolina School Board, State Board of Education, vision was to, that every student, public student, were graduated ready for post-secondary education and work and prepared for a globally engaged and productive citizen was the vision that was outlined. And of course, the mission of the State Board of Education is that it has the constitutional duty to lead and uphold a system of public education in North Carolina. And there were several goals, objectives, and measures that they looked at in terms of measuring how advanced North Carolina would move in terms of being an active participant in the 21st century. Again, I won't go into detail, but some of the highlights were that every student in North Carolina students graduated from high school, prepared for work, and their education. And they looked at graduation rates, they looked at the percentage of students who would be going to post-secondary education, they looked at the five-year plan in terms of the percentages, the goals, and the measurements of where the state plans to be from 2011 through 2017, 2016 through 2017. So, there were progressive measurements and goals that were established, even though we, as a state, enjoy the highest graduation rates, but the anticipation and the projection is that North Carolina will continue to improve and enhance, not only reducing the drop-off rate, but to increase the graduation rate, coupled with the fact that they want to try to get more students to attend college as well as take more advanced courses, more CTA courses, and as well as making sure that every student has a personalized educational plan, that every day, every student will have an excellent educator in front of them, and that every school district has up-to-date financial, business, and technology systems to serve its students and parents in the school community. And finally, that every student is healthy, safe, and responsible. And of course, there were numerous objections that were outlined, and again, because of time, I do not want to take the additional time, because we were there for three days. So, it was a very intense, a very comprehensive overview and a very comprehensive overhaul of the strategic plan for the State Board of Education. And if you have any additional questions that you'd like to address after the meeting, I'd be happy to share some of those. But again, it was a very informative session, very enlightening to me to get a better scope and appreciation of the tremendous responsibility that the state has inserted 145 million students in the state of North Carolina. In addition to that, as I've outlined in my brief summary, a couple other areas I wanted to cover just briefly was in the area of charter schools. Most of you remember that in 2011, I was appointed by Governor Perdue to serve on the Charter School Advantage Committee, and I was the only school board member on that committee throughout the state, so it was a very tough situation to be in, but I learned a lot and gained a great appreciation for the alternative choices that students have in the state of North Carolina. What I wanted to do is just briefly share some of the current statistics. In 2011, when the, I think statutory requirements had changed to take the cap off charter schools. At that time, the cap was on charter schools for almost 15 years of one of charter schools. Currently, and I won't go into details of all the specifics, currently, there are approximately 150 charter schools, which means that since 2011, 26, approximately 50, to include those that are becoming on board in August of 2014. That will bring a total of 150 charter schools, which is approximately a 50% increase since they took off the cap. And it is projected that in the next couple of years, that charter schools will double in North Carolina to approximately 2,000, correction, 200, 200. There are approximately 69,000 students who attend charter schools statewide, which represents less than maybe 3, 2 to 3% of the total student population in the state. And I did not bring the data in terms of how charter schools are performing with traditional education systems, but when you look at the composite, charter schools do not fare better than public education based on the data. There are some pockets where there are some excellent charter schools. I paid the privilege to reviewing and approving some of the very excellent innovative charter schools. But when you look across the board, charter schools fare either level or somewhat under what traditional public education has provided our students. But again, it does provide choices for students, but it also provides the opportunity and challenge for us to continue to anticipate this, to continue to improve focus on continuous improvement, to ensure that our system is a school system that is a school of choice for our parents who want to give us students a quality education. In addition to the charter school discussion, one of the more controversial issues at the state level has been the issue of virtual charter schools. And needless to say, the initial charter school application, virtual charter application that came to the Concord community was turned down. There was a very intense study that was done on the virtual charter school, and I shared with the state board some of my concerns and some of my issues as I'm struggling to find my notes. But essentially, when you look at and survey virtual charter schools nationally, there's still a lot of concerns in terms of how they address students that are at risk, how they address various subgroups, how they address disaggregating the data to determine how students who come from various subgroups and who are at risk, how they are performing across the landscape of virtual charter schools. And essentially, the report pretty much concluded that the verdict is still out on virtual charter schools. But I thought that the study was very comprehensive, but it still leaves a lot of question marks in terms of the viability of virtual charter schools in the state of North Carolina. With that being said, however, and the number of charter schools that are currently being reviewed and that will be presented at the state school board meeting next week or first week in August, there is, however, one virtual charter school that's part of the selection process that will be reviewed, which will be interesting to see how that turns out. But one, they found to get to the table in terms of being reviewed by the charter school Advantage Committee, and their recommendation will then become before the State Board of Education. So, it puts me on the different plateau, if you will, for our part of the process of recommending charter schools to the State Board of Education. They are sitting at the table where the State Board of Education has to approve or disapprove those charter schools that are coming before the Board of Education. So, those are just some of the highlights that relate to charter schools. And I talked a little bit about the strategic plan, the other piece of information that I want to share. And again, when you talk about the State Board of Education, you talk about a very broad, gigantic machinery with many components and many layers, and part of your package that I highlighted was a report that shows some of the departments and the representatives of the departments that represent those supporting agencies to assist school districts in the education community throughout North Carolina. Let me conclude, I just highlighted a little bit on another important study that was presented at the last State Board of Meeting, and that was the preliminary finding for the 2014 North Carolina Teacher Working Conditions Survey. And of course, as you know, we just completed our own district-wide survey, and I think the survey that we have pretty much mirrored what the state needs. And the report showed that over 100,000 teachers and principals participated in the survey. And the survey, from when it originated in 2002, has remained somewhat level and stable over the years, except that I wanted to highlight a couple of preliminary findings that I thought would be interesting. For one, there was some, basically, there was very high reporting in the findings to reflect teacher satisfaction with the conditions in the school systems. For example, more than 9 out of 10 educators, or 93%, reported that their faculty work in a school environment was safer, and that's positive. Nearly 94% of respondents indicated that teachers are held to a high professional standard for delivering instructions, and that's one of the higher ones. And also, over 94% of educators agree that the school leadership facilities using data to improve student learning. Let me repeat that, 94% of educators agree that school leadership facilitates using data to improve student learning. And that, of course, is one of the, you know, the standards that we utilize in terms of making decisions in terms of student learning, is we use the data, we analyze the data, and we certainly continue to use that as a model to help enhance our student learning. Some of the declines that were reported was that there was a reduction in the percentage, even over 74% of teachers have sufficient access to appropriate instructional material, and that represents about a 5% drop from the previous year, the percentage of educators receiving the number of hours of professional development decline, which suggests that they were not receiving the amount of professional development that they felt that they deserved. And obviously, that's continued to be a challenge in our school system. Look, one of the things that is really not a surprise, and that was that North Carolina educators report some concerns related to the time and the use of time to educate the students, so they felt that they needed more time, surprisingly, they needed more time to properly educate the students. And finally, more North Carolina educators report immediate plans to leave the education. That increased significantly. So, it's, which is not a surprise that across the landscape of North Carolina, you'll find more educators that are just in chairs, based on some of the changes legislative, you know, changes that has caused and motivated more teachers than ever before to leave North Carolina education system, which is a little discerning, but nonetheless, those are just some of the educators. So, again, this was a very in-depth study. You do have the report, a little bit more depth, some of the data, some of the graphs and everything, and I just highlighted a few areas for your benefit, just to share how comprehensive and how involved, you know, some of these studies are. But it does reveal overall, however, conditions are good for instructional learning throughout the landscape of North Carolina. So, that's the positives there. And again, as I mentioned, over 100,000 teachers participated in response. And finally, functions and oversight responsibilities, again, as I mentioned, the State Board has very comprehensive machinery. I wanted to just give appreciation of the different departments and responsibilities of those that make up those. And finally, I said I was going to do it, but I did also interview the State Board of Education legislative agenda, and I think it would be important to note that some of their legislative agenda do align with our agenda within North Carolina school board strategy, such as increased teacher pay. For example, we are stating the Masters and Doctorate Pay. The State Board certainly is advocating for that. To implement another year delay in that performance rate, ADEA performance rate, and And there is a movement to transform textbooks to one-hundred percent digital learning by 2017. Whether we'll get there or not remains to be seen, but that's part of the plans, to transition from textbooks to handicaps to digital learning. And one that you might be appreciative of is to amend and allow school, local school districts the option of a balanced calendar, of no more than that is so the school calendar flexibility was also part of the state board's legislative agenda as well. So I thank God for that, appreciate that. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report by briefing.
You mean, a few last final twenty seconds?
I got a whole lot more. Sorry, I'll reach you. I just wanted to know, I was not asleep at the meeting.
Okay, very attentive. Sound like you were busy. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Chairman, very much. Dr. Fisher, I believe you're going to give us a instructional update this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity, and it's my goal to bring an instructional update to every board meeting. I think that's at the core of what we do every day with instruction of our students and students. A couple of things, and before I start, I would like to say Cleveland County Schools is very fortunate to have Ms. Miller and Mr. Booker in their possession to bring back information, to take information. You know, they'll call sometimes and say, you heard this? And I'll say, well, here's what I'm hearing, and you take this. So we do appreciate your work, time, and energy to do that, and what you've represented in Cleveland County Schools across the state. Just go quickly, a few instructional updates. Some of these you've heard me talk about over the last couple of months. I want to thank you and where we're at in the summer. Reach to achieve, been a topic of most conversation. We've completed our four-week summer camp, very successful. I'd like to say a special thank you to Donna Ketchum, our elementary principals, the teachers, our parents, the community. Reach to achieve was very successful with Cleveland County Schools. Our summer camp went well, we completed that, and so we're proud of the work of those students and teachers and schools. We've had a literacy academy that's been going on at James Love and Graham for rising, current second, rising third graders, been an awesome opportunity. We still want to, special thanks to Deborah Corey, who's here tonight, and her title on staff, has been tremendous in working through that. The administrative teachers at James Love and Graham, working with those students in summer literacy, has been fantastic. Our math academy, you've heard this many times, our math academy is phenomenal. Steve River Murphy, here tonight, appreciate River Murphy, all your work at your church, sponsoring that in Mount Cabree and Chavo. I was there Friday in both sides, saw students engaged, working hard. It's a phenomenal partnership that we got with our faith-based community. Real proud of the work that those students are doing there at Community Math Academy. That's an academy that grows every year. I couldn't get out of the parking lot Friday without being asked about plans and growth and some possibilities for next year, so I'm really excited about that. Ready Set Grow is a kindergarten program. We've got it for rising kindergarten students, and that's ongoing. This week, and we continue over this week and next week, there are elementary schools, so you'll continue to see some mail buses running through the streets of our communities over the next couple of weeks. We've got high school students that are involved in activities, such as governor's school, summer ventures, West Palm, lots of different things that our high school students are involved in structurally, continuing their knowledge. Beginning in just a couple of short weeks in August, we'll be giving robotics camps. I know many of you have entered our robotics competitions, and students are excited about robotics camps, beginning, we've had teachers in for some training for robotics, and we're excited about what's going on there with those students. Robotics is just one of many examples I could give you of our students really excelling, doing great things, changing the way that we do school, we change the way they learn, and really accelerating some great things for our students. We're excited about the opportunity there. We'd like to just discuss real quickly some preliminary reports, don't have any hard data for you or any numbers, but some of our preliminary looks, it looked like our graduation rates are going to be up, drop out, the numbers are, the number of dropouts are down, and our graduation rates look like they're climbing again. As you remember, last year, our graduation rate was eighty-three point three, the highest just been in Cleveland County, first time we've been above state average, and we anticipate that to continue to grow. Our preliminary test score results also look good. Again, that's not, don't have the official word on that, but preliminary, we're excited about the official release of that later on, hopefully, at the beginning of the fall, so we're excited about that. The last instructional update, I'd like to pass along, is Ms. Miller mentioned, is the passing of the Common Core bill, which will change Common Core, as you know, what Common Core is. In that name, Common Core is going away, passed by the Senate in the House. You know, I've been asked, what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything for instruction for us this year. The standards will stay the same this year, and we do expect over this year or two, we'll see some adjustments. I believe those adjustments will be slight, especially at the beginning. There's some good provisions put in that, that, you know, curriculum changes have to be passed by the state board of education, and there's some things there that we feel comfortable, we're not going to just change everything that we've been doing. As you know, and I've been covering, you know, the state, Cleveland County Schools, there's been a lot of many training teachers, working with teachers on the Common Core, so, you know, we're happy to say that we're not going to change up things and throw it all away this year. Common Core will stay this year, and then there will be some changes made by President Dexter from the committee, and then presented to the state board. So obviously, we'll keep you informed and updated on that, but those things, the more instructional updates you know there this summer, sometimes people think that school stops and not a lot, not a lot's going on, but if you've been like being out in the community, you've seen our mail buses, and I will say, you know, appreciate some of David Pliss' transportation. I've had to call David in multiple times during the spring, and they were only buses we lived, only buses we lived. I said, I'm not sure when you're going to get them. Well, I should service, but we're going to need to run them this summer, and Mr. Pliss' has been very, very flexible in making sure that our students have a bus to ride them. So that's been a great team effort instructional. But we've got a lot of instructional things going on this summer, a lot of great things going on with the schools here this summer. Ms. Miller said, he reminds me that he and our community partnerships with, I was with Ms. Miller one day in the morning in a meeting, and she said, I've got to go, I got students waiting outside the art center for art camp. So our students are really engaged, struggling, having them here this summer. So, you have any questions to listen to?
Questions? Dr. Fisher, how many third graders have we got still shortly to read to you?
I've not gotten the final report, but that is a very small number. We started summer camp with about half of what we anticipated. You know, again, hats off to the teachers and administrators, our third grade teachers, teacher assistants, which has done a phenomenal job, and that's, principals were coming in at the end of last week, and even some scanning beginning this week, they were very, very happy with the numbers we've got. We'll present to you some information that, our students are very pleased with, our students and teachers, and very pleased. A lot over than we had just been.
No further questions?
Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I don't want to steal some of the thunder. I understand, Dr. Fisher, you will ask some of the members on the team from the math academy to come and kind of give an update or report, which I think there will be some exciting things, and I guess I shouldn't steal that thunder, I know that one of the visitors was from the state that wanted to feature them in the National Magazine, but Ms. McPooty may get upset with me, so I won't go into further.
Don't tell everything you know. I will say that Thursday, Friday evening, the Community Math Academy has their graduations, and so if you're available, it's either Thursday evening or Friday evening, send us some information on that, that's always great.
This is the last week, so you have not had the chance to visit any of those two sites, in Chavo or Mount Cabree, we still have an opportunity to do that.
Next item on the agenda is some information, explanation of beginning teacher support plan, I believe Jennifer Walker's going to handle it.
Good evening, it's Jennifer Walker, and I'm Director of Professional Development. My duties and responsibilities include beginning teacher support and service our beginning teacher coordinator. Each year, you are asked the Local Board of Education to approve the beginning teacher support program in accordance with state board policy. So tonight, I submit to Cleveland County Schools 2014-15, beginning teacher support program and request your approval. The plan I submitted for your approval contains no major changes from previous plans. The substance of our program remains the same, however, the format is different, I notice that. The change in format is made to allow our plan to the thirteen components of state board policy to see the A2 or Z or four. I believe I will have a copy of the plan, and I would like to answer any questions you may have from how you certification need.
Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Walker? This is an action item, so it was a pleasure forward, there being no questions.
Make a motion to be approved, the beginning teacher support program.
It's been moved and seconded, and we approve the beginning teacher support plan as per finish by Ms. Walker. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one that I read, I kind of got to the information a little late, and I certainly am very supportive of some of the professional development. I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to survey the information, kind of the last thing, I'll be honest, and apologize, but I was looking for some areas of cultural competency, kinds of, just issues of training, is there any complaints in there?
That request, as part of the teacher evaluation tool, certainly diversity is the standard to the teacher evaluation tool, and so that's addressed through that, but this particular program has very specific components, and the components you see before you require the thirteen specific one more site board policy asked for. I'm not sure that really answered your question, but...
It answered, but, you know, I think that we need to be, we need to make sure, I understand these requirements, but just wanted to kind of emphasize the need to incorporate that as much as we can, and much of our question.
And my overall organization or more in our induction program, is there one that would you like to see that ongoing through our induction program that we do over three years?
I think it's a cool.
That's hit heavily in the second year that we, because they focused on nothing but those five standards throughout, and so it is a mission of their second year of induction series that we did, but we can make more attention to that.
There being no other questions whatsoever, and there being a motion on the floor, I believe, have been seconded. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Message this before we do vote. Thank you. Now on to our personnel report, Dr. Fisher.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have attached a personnel report. I've also given you an addendum to that personnel report. I'd like to ask your approval for the personnel report, as well as to hire Dr. William Dixon to a four-year contract as assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction at Cleveland County Schools. Dr. Dixon is currently the assistant superintendent in Colton County, South Carolina, Colton County Schools. He can come to Cleveland County upon your approval to take that same position in Cleveland County. Dr. Dixon is unable to be here this evening due to a death of his family, but it's big in short while ago, so you have to attach a recommendation in this addendum here for the remise of Dr. Dixon.
Any questions for Dr. Fisher? I have one question.
Is this personnel, is this only a whole issue?
It's on everything that's marked an action item.
I need to excuse myself from personnel, due to a family member on the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Officer Reddy, entertain a motion.
I have a question to report to the personnel item, this is directly classified.
Seconded, it's moved and seconded, and the personnel items recommended by the superintendent to be approved. Any further discussion?
Dr. Fisher, could you describe the process that you followed in recommending Dr. Dixon to us?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We advertised for several weeks for assistant superintendent position, and in that opportunity, we had several applicants. We brought media applicants in, both interim and extern, we had a selection team to interview those applicants, we married that to a list of finalists, we brought Dr. Dixon back in for a very, very extensive second interview, followed by a couple of phone calls, we looked at resumes checks, called multiple folks doing that, and then once we felt comfortable that Dr. Dixon had qualities that, in Cleveland County Schools, all that record was taken.
Any other questions? Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Message this. Thank you. Now on to the next item, the Title I application, Ms. Corey.
Dr. Fisher's report is that challenging the Title I application, the federal register departments that the local board of education approved the Title I program, and the Title I application for 2014-15 project grant is for five and a half billion, which is an increase in both that last year, and we're able to continue funding all our seventeen schools, continue all our programs, and I'm asking for your action, and as for any questions off the record.
Any questions? Now, the one for this year's five point five billion, what we have in this, in our genesis is five being one hundred seventy-two thousand. Is that crooked?
It's the curve.
That's what it is?
Yes, it is.
And it's an increase of how much?
An increase of all the seven hundred thousand dollars from last year.
Seven hundred. Any other question?
Was that based on increasing on the students or just...
An increase of all your students.
That's a different level.
Any other questions?
Did we request that amount of money, or this is what the state...
That's what the state...
It was a pleasure forward, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Title I report with a special note that we need to, or should, commend Deborah Corey for being an excellent steward of this Title I program for many years. She's demonstrated excellent stewardship, leadership, strong leadership to create administration and accountability of our local funds, and I think that sometimes you don't get fully recognized for all the good work you do, and I just wanted to see this honor to her team and her team, and the rest of the staff that are in charge of the Title I program.
Dr. Fisher's report is...
You've all heard Mr. Booker's motion. Do I have a second or a third? Any further discussion?
I have one other question. That additional seven hundred thousand dollars that we, that we came, I mean, what will that directly go for? Will that be additional salaries for...
That will be for us to maintain, even all our teachers, our teachers assistants, funding all elementary schools, and it takes all of that to do that. So that's what that will be in, in helping us to not have to cut major costs.
Where would we get that other seven hundred thousand from beforehand? If that's just going to keep us going where we're at, I mean, are we adding anything with that seven hundred thousand?
No, that's just going to keep all the people in here, we don't have to lose anybody. And you have to just keep all our students.
So if we weren't bringing seven hundred, additional seven hundred thousand, would we be making kids, or would we be pulling that money from somewhere else?
It also gives us the opportunity to do some things for students, and I agree, a whole part of it, like Mr. Booker said, there was a phenomenal job for our type of schools, our workforce, and also, not only allows us to continue to do the things we've been doing, but serve children in some different ways. And there with us, some of the things that come out of that type of budget, especially for, you know, for students, programmatic things, you know, getting a lot of bank in that type of budget, personally, I would structure appropriate. So that additional money only allows us to continue to employ as a way we can also continue to offer services for students in a growing, in a, in a community that are privileged.
You've all heard the motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, you now, thank you. Mr. Lee, I'll leave you up next with the budget update, followed by the surplus of questions.
You heard there, it's a solid one. You have the package. You want to, this will be a really old school power point to thank this instead of, you know, whether we go through this. Kind of a overview of what we are, how we got here. Basically, the governor released it like early in the year and that budget carries no weight other than really setting the philosophically what his approach to education, what he, his programs are going to be. And ever how he may be able to endorse the House and Senate as they go forward. So the governor obviously presented the budget, but ultimately the House and Senate, including the ones that adopt the highest budget. So we had the governor release his education budget, K twelve budget was eight point oh nine two million, a billion dollars. And that budget, he funded, requested an average teacher salary increase of three point three percent. There was a reduction in teacher assistance, but it was only the reduction for what in AEM growth. So in, in other words, he would have funded TAs for the growth in AEM. He would still fund K three teacher assistance across the board. And these are all of the items in his budget, but these are the highlights of the items that really impacted public education. The transportation budget was projected under his, under the government budget to be reduced by five point five million dollars. The governor also included in his budget, passing workers' compensation insurance back to the local LEA for the state paid employees. That would have been a hit to the local budget across the state of nine million dollars before our, our, our position in whatever the workers' compensation is for the state paid employees, including county employees. The governor's budget also restored the salary supplements for education, master's degrees and doctoral degrees in the school of Georgia. Just click and click the page to the next, next level budget. The Senate was supposed to adopt their budget. Their budget is eight point one one two billion dollars. Originally, it funded an average teacher salary increase of eleven percent. The salary is capped out at fifty thousand dollars after the planned year. In other words, it didn't increase beyond fifty thousand dollars. Teachers originally under that proposal had voluntarily relinquished longevity, it was built into the salary scale. It had voluntarily relinquished career status tenure. Teacher had voluntarily agreed to graduate pay for which was no, masters level pay, no doctorate level pay. Given it to the professional teacher category. Eliminated teacher assistants in grades two, three. The state cut was two hundred and thirty-three million dollars. Cleveland County Schools portion of that cut was two point one seven four million dollars. If that proposal were adopted. Teacher reductions were forty-three million dollars. Those were the teachers that whenever the BIANI budget was adopted in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, that were supposed to be allotted to the school systems in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, in the second year of BIANI. So you never received those positions, you could call it a killer, but it was teaching positions that we would have received under the budget that was adopted last year. And that may be coming to play as we go forward based on some of the comments that she, as long as she. Under the Senate's budget, they were cutting transportation twenty-eight million dollars, a significant to, to transportation program. And that would have been stabilized. Educational salary supplements were restored, but they were only restored if you remain on the current pay scale that they, what they classified as professional teacher status. The House education budget was eight point zero six one billion dollars. Again, the highlights, average teacher salary five percent. Teacher reductions, the same forty-three million dollars. That's, those are those, again, those positions that were built to reduce class size last year from phase D under the two thousand fifteen, fifteen school year. Education salary supplements were, were restored, were, were built into the scale. So the evidence continuation of the salary scale has remained to be for none of yous. Teacher assistant funding was definitely tapped in K three across the board. Those were no cuts. Senate was the first to adopt the budget. The House was the second to adopt the budget. Those budgets went to each chamber. Of course, they, they uniformly rejected those budgets and nominated competencies. The Senate and House party appointed competencies. There've been numerous proposals presented to, to each of the other chambers over the last several weeks. We read all of the, he said, she said, anybody else said, whatever, it's gone back and forth between the, the House and Senate. But ultimately, to this point, we're still at stale. There've been a number of proposals, but nothing that has passed at this point right now. To put, put the page. Here is the latest proposals that are before the Senate and House. So you do see a moving together, finally, of some of the proposals, but there's still a lot of ground to be covered. The latest Senate proposal reduces the salary increase from eleven percent. It was built in to, to an average of eight percent. It establishes a six-step pay scale. That's important because all the six steps built into the pay scale that covers a third year career commitment teacher. It's the four years and then the next four steps are three-year increments. And then the final sixteen through thirty is, is one, one pay scale, one pay scale in its debt, fifty thousand dollars. It eliminates teacher assistants in grade three at this point right now. So they backed away from eliminating teacher assistants in grades two and three to eliminate, to eliminate teacher assistants in grade three. The catch to that is it makes teacher assistant funding for grade two a non-recurring item. Meaning that the Senate or the General Assembly next year did not reestablish teacher assistants for grade two. They go away after this year. So they really have a back very far from where they, they were at the beginning. And it eliminates TA expansion for a year. If you look around the House side, the House started out at five percent average increase. They have inked, they have raised their proposal to try to, to get the Senate to come aboard to an average of six percent. It uses basically the pay scale the same place, it includes a six percent salary increase into the existing pay scale, so you have thirty steps, you have thirty plus steps. Plans teacher assistants for K three. It eliminates the TA expansion, that's to compromise, that they pass back to the, to the Senate. So they, they've covered the point that said we won't fund TAs for those additional AEM growth that you've got. Because more does have TAs still in the budget, K three. This page multiple times clicks. The latest Senate proposal leaves an unspecified K twelve education budget of a hundred seventy-three point eight eight one million dollars. And that means that somewhere or another, the cut has to be done, whether or not that is, is a back to the old stretch period, the dodge, or that it did in past year. I don't know what that really means, but there's, as I already said, a three million dollar cut in the Senate proposal that still has to occur. Either they will identify that or we will identify it. Most of the language that's referred coming out of the general assembly is that we need to have to report final additional cuts. Lottery, they agreed to, to raise the amount of money that they take in lottery, the front part of this budget, so a hundred sixteen million dollars, and they dropped time teacher salary to relinquish from the tender. The latest House proposal, on a cabinet life perspective, leaves an unspecified K twelve education cut of a hundred thirty-six million dollars from state law. Again, they, they agree with the Senate, but on the additional lottery proceeds to be funded, funded into education, into regular education budget of a hundred sixteen million dollars. They moved the teacher pay, packages that they originally had five to six percent, and they've attempted the Senate's lottery. I think one more time. What do we have here? The competencies are still meeting, the Senate was supposed to meet at five thirty this, this afternoon. The House is supposed to meet at, I think, nine thirty in the, in the morning. They could adopt a, a compromised budget. I don't know. As Ms. Miller has already stated, there has been talk that you really have a budget. The second year of the BIANI budget was adopted last year. And if they adjourn and don't come to compromise in some fashion, that budget that was adopted last year for the second year will automatically go into play and that, if you got a budget, it would be, as she's already pointed out, no salary increases. But then there's also been a lot of other things that I think most of us consider to be good possible because you know, TA cuts and those things that come into play. So the competencies could adopt a budget. If they do adopt the budget, then you would have to get back to each house. The House would have to adopt, adopt that complimentary budget. The Senate would have to adopt that complimentary budget and both houses have to agree to that. If they do not do that, in fact, the General Assembly could adjourn under Representative Moore's proposal last week to, to, to pass a bill to end this session, this Friday. So that's kind of where we stand right now. I'd be more happy to provide everything, questions if you have. Again, there's just been a lot of speculation, very little more of a fact that it would be not, that we'd be more happy to provide response with questions if you have.
Yes, sir. Dr. Lee, thank you for your report. I had a quick, just, just looking back at that BIANI budget is adopted. We are looking at keeping all our TAs, same, same everything, no potential cuts, as you were saying. I know that you said that. That's pretty much what we're looking at, that BIANI budget is adopted.
The BIANI budget really leaves the program as it was in place through this past. And so you're sort of modern change, but there's very little there. And the budget really does remain intact. No salary increases. Operationally, we'd be much, almost available fourteen, fifteen years as we work.
Representative Moore said that it could be possible to get this Friday?
That was his, that was his bill he introduced was to adjourn to the session July twenty fifth, July.
So, so I guess whether it's good and bad to that, the bottom line is that if they do that, if they just adjourn and don't take any action, how many years would that make it that there are going to salary increases?
It would be since two thousand and eight, I guess, of the, of one salary, pretty simple. Sixty thousand. I'd never seen, of course, in the past, we've had some talks, we've been back to forth, but as a general rule, we have to clear one party, control the House, another party controls the Senate. And philosophically, you know, they, they said, we cannot, because these guys won't come aboard. The other said, we cannot, because these guys won't come aboard. Well, it's the same party, but.
They still can't.
They, they, they can't come, come to, to grips with that. And in thirty years I've been in this, I have never seen it come to form. And, and actually adjourn a session and just say, well, the budget won't be adopted really for months.
Well, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought this last budget was, had a short fall in it. Didn't, weren't they behind on the budget in there?
There, yeah, there, there's been speculation about, you know, that they do too. And that's kind of the real reason that this one come into play if they do that. There are a number of folks that will, will, will not necessarily see, on, on helping in terms of society. You can see, but the benefits, I think that are probably needed in the both houses really think that it's important because it's not built into, into that budget.
If the Senate and the House would get together, does the governor have to be in charge of it?
He does have to, to sign the bill, but the fact that it's a G O G, governor and, and House and Senate. I know there's been a lot of fighting going back and forth. I can't imagine he would have signed the bill. He has come out very publicly, very vocally in, in favor of getting somewhat near to the House budget as opposed to the, to the Senate budget. And I know that he and Mr. Booker have had some, some pretty short comments about each, each other and, or about the Senate versus the government and what have you in, in that process. But he's been very vocal, vocally supportive somewhere along the lines of what the House budget is.
Sure.
How many teacher assistants would we lose if they dropped the, the second grade or the third grade?
I don't know the exact number, but basically the funding drops in half, so what would we have to do?
Half the, half all our TAs?
Yeah, if they dropped the second, if they dropped the third, then this may not be exact, which was about four of those things.
So we'd lose them since a lot of the TAs are bus drivers, we're going to lose a lot of bus drivers.
That's going to be difficult for us this year, if we're, because that many people are critical to our operations. And, and not just because of our bus, but because of the things that they, that they do in the classroom. But it would make it awful for us, for our buses.
And the, and the fact that not, that that's not to diminish anything they do in the classroom, because I've been there, I've seen what they do. Those TAs make our elementary schools work and without them, it's going to be very difficult to do the kind of work that we. to do the kind of work that we've been doing in our elementary schools. Those TAs are talented folks that work hard with their kids, they're really supporting the whole running of the school. When you start talking about losing a fourth of your TAs at elementary school, you're talking about drastically changing the whole complexity of the elementary school, what goes on there, and if you lost half of them, it would be catastrophic to the program almost.
If you were to say, the budget office would just target the Senate budget, the budget, then we got six different positions in the same line.
That's about the same for us. That's about the same.
Does this state take your meaning of our higher school and middle school teacher assistants, or is that localized? That's localized. And one more question that Ms. Miller brought up, and said that we haven't had a rate since two thousand and eight, and has that one point two percent? Is nobody in our school system has had a rate since then?
It's always changed, I have a position, but not had salary increases because I'm doing the job that I'm doing last year than this year, and I'm not ready to...
In other words, no, no interministeration, no rates, even if they're in the same position?
I don't know if it's like it's having a rate, if someone's going in the same position, if you've got something, I don't know.
I think that's, that information is just regarding the state's schedule, there's no good rates in the state's schedule.
And that's what I was referring to, was the state...
Well, we have gave raises to people that still have their same positions.
But I was referring to, again, I think, talking about the TAs, I think that's the thing that bothers me the most about either one of the budgets, is that it's almost like our teacher assistants are being used as pawns, they're being traded back and forth between the two chambers, and it's so unfair, because they do do a good job, it's like, okay, I'll give you a few teacher assistants, if you'll give me this, and, you know, while they're kicking on the teacher assistants, I don't understand, I'll never know.
You know, what I talk, if the Senate is in a solid position, and we can direct the initial reports, it seems as though that this isn't working, following the sort of type of, but then there's, you really go through the process, and what they really only agreed to do is not cut the TAs in grade three, and follow one more year in grade two, and so not cut that, so they'll build a budget item next year, grade two, the TAs are gone.
It's definitely going to be a big hurdle, isn't it? Certainly a question about that. I think what's most important is that it isn't important that our teachers...
And I think you're right, Ms. Miller, the part about it being non-recurring is critical, because if it's a non-recurring item, if they just do nothing next year, because what, it would take an affirmative action to put it back in the budget, if they just take no action, they don't do anything, then the TAs will work one more year. You would argue they're looking to get one fourth this year and one fourth next year in addition to the cuts they already did last year. The House is basically fighting over, we're going to cut this bunch, this bunch, they're applying our hours to cut the education. It's sad, you know, they're looking for teacher salary increases, and one is saying now six percent, one is saying eight percent, and they can't think of a number between six and eight. I can think of a number between six and eight. They're the opposite, it's part of the fact, but after fifteen years, it hasn't looked any better than in grade, you got fifteen years, jobs, you know, what's yet to come.
It's almost like they're pushing all the time.
I was going to say really quickly, my man, I think we all agree that, you know, TAs are essential, and, you know, we can talk about that all day, because we all agree with that, but we are attached, you know, looking ahead and, you know, trying to plan on what may or may not happen. Senate and House, I mean, neither one of them are too good, but I think the House is a lot better than the Senate, in my opinion. But assuming the worst happens, assuming, you know, the Senate actually, you know, gets a pass, whatever has happened, you know, whatever's our plan, what are we going to do? I mean, have we looked at those possible, you know, situations? What are we going to do? Because I think we've all said that, come with B two B, what kind of plans do we have? Have we looked at that option, that crazy option, that we don't want to have to put it to effect? I mean, have we even thought about that possibility?
We've thought about it, there is, it would depend on how much of the work wants to resize the process. If that cuts two point two million dollars, and you say that we can't do that, the answer is clear, we can't do that, we can't make the same cut, but I know that right now, we're not hiding, but that's why I'm going to put us in a position to make that type of a cut without really going back in and reducing our arms first rule, we can say, what, we should have been like, if possible, right now, if we had to follow the given space in that case, we would try to tread water.
Mr. Thurman, I can assure you, through Mr. Lee's eyes, you know, thinking, you know, difficult conversations, if that happens, we'll be going back to the board's, this plan, this life option.
Who will be driving the buses? Me and you.
If you're not in the school, we can come back with you.
But you can just back to your...
The Senate...
We may not be able to get anybody up here between the hours of two thirty-four, because we all may be driving the buses, so we may just have to call us during that time.
It's kind of like, you know, somebody's case.
We don't want to be on the bus, I can't assume.
I think Mr. Yarborough stood down his mic.
Okay, I think we've hashed this out, and I would do now is, oh, for the best possible. David, I believe you have an action item on the surface.
Yes, sir. You have the surplus list, you have two lists in your packet, we would respect their requests, if you could have those items in surplus, so that we can put them on the G O D O auction and move forward. The first list is the list of C T P equipment, and the second list is a list of basically town operations surplus equipment. I'd be more happy to try to respond to the questions that you may have, please.
It's an action item, but anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Why are we getting rid of some of this landscape that is in shot, and we replaced it with heat, for example, by a heater? We don't do that anymore? To make it look nicer around our schools?
I think this one, my understanding of that, and I did ask that question, I know you're giving it to me, but I did ask that, but it's my understanding that those things are no longer in use in our plant operations at this time, we're not using them, you know, while we're doing the store, so they're surplus, they're not...
Wow, what are we talking about?
They're just not being used, whether this machinery is, is...
Is working.
You know, oh, but we're not using those, instead of the store, we are declaring surplus.
Draw a bubble?
I think all that information from plant operations, we're not using that.
Any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure, Lord?
I have a question to approve the surplus items, the declarations that we selected.
Is there a second, to move in second, and to approve, which leaves recommendations on the disposal of surplus, declaration of surplus material? Any further discussion? If not, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, aye, do you oppose?
Yeah, no.
Thank you, David. Ms. Waller, I believe that you are next up, to tell us about calendar makeup days for the coming year.
Good evening. I had amended on board docs about the proposed inclement weather makeup days, of course, the law requires that we have a plan for making these days. Each of the plans, we give you three options, have our five days, which is pretty much the amount of days we've done in the past, that has been sufficient. The first option would be allowing the first three days that if we missed, three days for inclement weather to be forgiven based on accumulated hours, and then the next two days would be May twenty-fifth and March twenty-seventh. Option two would do four days using the accumulated hours, and then one of the next two, if the day, you know, if we have, if the days occurred before March twenty-seventh, we would use that day, and then if it occurred after, we would do May twenty-fifth. And then option three would be using, allowing all five days to be based on, forgiven based on accumulated hours. I think our preference is probably option B, where we're happy to do whatever you want, or to look at some other options if you want to. I think when we looked at our accumulated hours, we could do up to seven, if I remember correctly, but we felt like that, if we did up to seven, we don't give ourselves any flexibility with other things happening, so we felt like going with five would be our best option.
So, option three is your preference?
Option B, the second one.
Option two?
Option two.
Sorry, I have A, B, C in my head.
Okay, all right. You've heard, Ms. Waller, any questions, Paul?
On option one, you've got May twenty-fifth as the first, the last one, and second one, you've got March twenty-seventh as the first. Tell me what you can just think of, it's my, my, my May twenty-fifth, the one in March twenty-seventh.
With option two, it just gave, we put it because we would use either one of those, depending when the days came, you know, if we had so much snow in February, that we took, we did four accumulated, and then it was before March, we could do that, because you think, if we have that many days, we may need, you know, we have more, we have to come back, so that just gives that option. We listed the May twenty-fifth first and the other one, because in all of the last five calendars, that has been our first designated day, has been, that's Memorial Day, has been the one that they've chosen to be a snow day, so we just kept it as it had been in the past, no really thinking other than that's just what we had done in the past.
And March twenty-seventh, that's the kindergarten orientation.
And we do, that day's always been one too, that's been one of our choices.
And Ms. Waller, is there a reason why Memorial Day has been, you know, I know it's always been that way they say, but is there a reason?
Maybe because it's at the end, and if you think of snow, and you're looking at days, you're thinking of where we have a day, then, you know, it's snow any time, and that could be a good day.
In addition, Mr. Thurman, sometimes, you know, like, remember this past year's calendar, yes, you were limited on other days, so that was, that's why we decided, you remember, to go, increase our construction hours in some areas, to get over a thousand eighty construction hours, so we've got some flexibility, so if unless, this past winter was...
Admiral.
Traditionally, we don't have that many days, so if we miss, you know, a couple days, then we would not have to tap in one day, obviously, that would be a preference, but that's what we're trying to give the options. The chairs, you know, if option one is the board's choice, then we could arrange those, the March twenty-seventh, the major event, if not, there's the road construction.
I'd like option three best, tell me why you're not recommending that. I think it, I mean, I think we are, we're good with that, we are recommending it, and I think it just gives us a little more flexibility if things happen, and we have a lot of early release days, or different things that can happen, you know, if this is, we need holiday weekends, and that's given us four, but it's not using why our seven that we could use.
You know, they try to strike a balance between makeup days and construction time, you know, trying to do that, so I think these are three options that could work, if like, if our, definitely work in construction time, also in the council.
Well, I'm personal for option three.
Mr. Paul?
I would, in my sport, we need to be talking about adding minutes to school duty, which I was strongly advocating for, so that we could do away with makeup days, and, you know, if we need an additional hours, then I would have, would rather see it add by adding a couple extra minutes to each school duty, than adding, than keeping makeup days. So, you know, adding, if we added two minutes a day, that would make care of the extra minutes, so I would be an advocate of adding those two extra minutes, that's going to make the difference, which would actually make the difference in the extra makeup day, rather than continue to keep makeup days. I think makeup days are basically a problem for our parents, education, and for our kids, they're not very good academically, because so many kids miss those makeup days, so I would, I think, option three, and if we need the extra day, go ahead, make about eight double extra minutes in the school cap.
I agree, a lot of parents do make plans a more late, in the spirit of George Lydman, he says, if the state legislature would leave us alone, we'd be out of school before Memorial Day anyway, and it never would be an issue. We used to graduate high schools about the third week of May, and it never was an issue until the Senate decided, let me set calendar better than we do, but it is important to our parents to make plans a more late, and have school out on that kindergarten orientation day, I mean, more elementary schools, and a lot of them, they say it's, it's an intensive day, all those little ones are coming in, and if we can dedicate that day to our children, not say, we're going to dedicate the day to the children unless it snows, if it snows, then we're not going to dedicate the day to children. All of these have advantages and disadvantages, but I agree with Ms. Hall's, operators would be option three as well.
I would, hold, absolutely.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go with option three, because that would make a policy.
It's been moved in second, and we go with option three, first five days be forgiven based on accumulated hours. Any further discussion at this point?
So, tell me again, if for some reason we have a major snowstorm that goes through, or hurricane, or whatever, and we miss more than five days, we come back, come back to the board, and just, so we probably can say, you got it?
See, I think last year, you did what the craziness, it was five days.
Yeah.
Any further questions, or just...
I missed the, as you know, I was out of town at work session, so kind of fill in, did we decide not to add any extra minutes?
We added, we had ten minutes to our elementary day, high school, high school schedules were, were, well, a thousand eighty construction hours, we kind of looked at this conventional order for those days, and so we added time to our elementary schedules. One thing you have to remember, when we talk about adding times to our, our elementary schedules, well, the busy day hours, bus driver hours, you know, that, that's something, I know, we talk about five minutes, but five minutes times, five, you know, five days, you know, it starts, we have to really, you know, start to be careful with those things, but we feel like our principles are comfortable, wherever we're at right now, and we'll look at this year and see if we need to make some adjustments for time, if we can, I think we go, but option three gives us the flexibility of a normal winter, we find, we have our operator, you know, issue with weather, and we'll, we'll make adjustments, and, and, you know, an area allocation, that's not a question.
Right. Another question, are we adjusting that time into consideration for parents, might have kids to pick up intermediate schools and middle schools?
Yes, we gave us, we gave us elementary schools some flexibility in their time, start stop times, to adjust around middle schools and high schools, so they have the, they have the flexibility, sightseeing.
Sounds like an apple.
There be no further comments, then, all in favor of the motion to approve option three, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Yarborough, leave your up, Capitol Projects Report. Next, Mr. Arbrooke, leave here up with Capitol Projects report.
Familiar with Chairman Board Members, our final pre-teen classroom projects at Bethware and Mary are now complete. It gives us approximately thirty classrooms across the district that have met the new, excuse me, childcare lifestyle standards. Not in this bidding, the first effort to get this work behind us. Roofing projects this summer, we have three projects that are complete. The business center, red roof, Caesar Elementary and the annexed building at Graham, those have been completed. The administrative area at Burns Mill, that project is very close, been completed. Painting this summer, the exterior painting work at Graham and James Love has been completed. The entire school project at Foster is very close, been finished. We've been at number three, another entire school project, we're a couple weeks out, but that will be in good shape with those completion dates. Uh, we did have a sinkhole to develop, a bus garage, I think it's really associated with the underground fuel tanks. That was moved up around a few years back. We had some sinking, some settling there, so we had to actually come in, pick that up, re-burden and pack that. And just to re, that's probably the damage behind us now. We're both in the process of replacing the carpet with VCT at Graham. This will really involve about nine classrooms at campus. Crest High School, fire alarm update's complete. We know we got a transformer to go out there in the school year, but the transformer has been installed. It is the only service, the Jard Athletic was there, so we did have power. However, we decided as part of this project, we had to replace the three panels associated with this transformer. We replaced one, and we still have that. King Mountain Hospital, shared with the greenhouse at the park, which is fully, that has been installed. Power's in, our guys are still working on the plumbing aspects of that, and then we've got to have some concrete walls there. The soft pile of the best facility, she moves her own, bricks up, so that, that building is in the dry space, there's some future there. Also, part of Title IX, the former field house, which is now serving women's athletics. Painting is completed, that facility, we've replaced the lights and hopefully have the workers installed shortly. North Elementary, we did replace there, gym floor with a rug rock form, that has been installed. King Mountain Middle School, gym rock, that new force is installed, really looks sharp. That's been, that's been completed a couple weeks, we announced a hearing, have that new floor and hopefully the first week of August, we'll have the leadership installed. Crest Middle School, Dr. Woods is hoping that those IP funds will arrive, just for administration there at Crest Middle School. Also, you can see that we purchased a full classroom opening. This is very similar of what we did in regard to the purchase of the unit that was at the community college that we relocated to Crest High School. Mr. Allen, this, this year was at Shelby High School, the five year lease ran out. Mr. Allen really initiated this move, he did not need the space any longer. He moved his foreign language teachers to the inside of the building. So we're ready to contact our provider, they've got a track price to purchase this unit. So we won't be able to relocate to Mount High School, that setup has started. What that will do is allow us to, we got four double wides, the leases run up this year. So we will be able to remove four of the double wides very quick. That unit will be located on the south side of the Preston Academy, walking out well there. So have good luck in that, of that process with Crest High School and that ancient meeting, so we're fortunate to have this opportunity. But I can share with you, leases run up, you know, a number of times these units, it's not a track. It's sort of based on their inventory, what they have out there, so we try to take advantage of it and get out of these. Mr. Chairman, I also like to take just a few minutes to give you about day, on the new health department, it's not only our quality, but how, a little bit of impact. And coming back, share with you, the drive, we've got this one behind current DSS. And the drive will actually come from Shelby Interstate, DSS. And how that impacts us, basically, currently, we enter our north entrance to Shelby Interstate, that's right. With this new drive, we will be actually entering our entrance on the north side off of the, their main entrance. They have started working that area, they really have a two-phase, ready project there in the part of their drives and our house. This is phase one, and they have a plan to have that completed before it starts building. So should, should see some ready in that area. And also, sharing this with you, it's my understanding that we could do some soil mediation for this, the health department. And basically, the pad on the building is on some soil that holds moisture. So they're going to have to mediate that, and I think it's a process of search armpit. And what they actually do is with that extra dirt, bringing it, stacking on that pad where the building will be built. And it actually compresses the soil, settles it to a level that will need compaction. And I say that because if you remember, the land behind Shelbyville, Shelby Interstate. There's about forty acres there that ties into this current site of the building, the new health, uh, health department. You know, where our track is located, that's not Cleveland County School Park, that's the county. So what they're going to do is they're going to go below our track, below our athletic fields. And that's where they're going to reclaim the dirt, the, the search armpit. So you'll see construction below Shelby Interstate, below the track. It's currently a sustained landscape, we didn't, we're not going to cut that anymore. They're going to actually move tons of dirt on that area to where they'll, they'll build the health department. And I don't know if it's a month, two months, that search armpit, that place needs to be repaired. I say that so when you see rain down behind Shelby Interstate, that's what I was, never heard of that, but that's much.
So there will be that dirt right back?
If you see that, that's, that's the point. It is, it is very affecting for children, for parents, sites that have compaction issues.
So did I understand you correctly, when school starts this year, parents will not enter Shelby Interstate whether it lasts? Did I understand you correctly?
That's correct. Well, uh, buses.
Buses.
The main entrance at Shelby Interstate will be at the door.
Okay, so that is a change.
That's not a change.
Okay.
And basically, our buses enter that just for convenience if we're dropping students off. And then we have staff on, so basically, any, any bus, any staff. As far as our student drop, they'll pick up that one.
So Mr. Arbrooke, so soil mediation, that should be good, that'll be out before school starts. When we have to build, I mean, the kids are going to be using the track and things like that? We have to build fence or anything?
They will, they'll have construction teams. And again, I'm on, it's not close, it's, it's down, if you've ever seen that area, it's a small, it's a ball off area.
It's way off from where they're going to be doing.
Yeah, it's a hard place.
When you say below, I didn't know that was intended either.
And that is, they will, they'll have that. And I think the, it's my understanding that actual movement of dirt will be done before school starts, they bring it back. And I think that's based on the next time.
I have a quick question, sir. Now, we should, certain type, each PAC, they're just on the projected projects. There's only four of those now. We used, we used to have a lot more of the schools as a project for that, but they're deems.
Are they?
Yes. And how, have we?
That's just, that, that's been a, that's just an error, we can sum up, but we have not had any.
Burn, Burns Mill, Crest High, Crest Mill.
Burn off, Burns High, Crest High, and then we have a few other facilities, so that's just.
Just got the title.
Title Grand Park, that's right.
I guess, I guess my other question is, do we have any, I mean, that's been on there for several years. What's our game plan to get this air conditioning for these? I mean, I, I went to a bin several months ago at Crest Middle School, very uncomfortable in there, and the GM. What's our game plan to make this happen?
Uh, we've been basically just dealing with our, our funding and as far as the projects. But the one thing, and, and I'll share this, is that once we start this process, that it will, it will, and we've looked at it at Burns High. We, we've had an engineer come in and in order to cool their gene, their water rooms in that area, we will have that power control. And that's the thing that in most high schools, the property age, the limited amount of extra power is in those facilities. We're looking at expansion possible, so those are the things that are going on. And again, I'll take Burns High, Crest High, for the, our long strategic plan of adding our authorities. And you're able to move those functions that we're talking about into our, to be an air condition for those, for those individuals. And I think we got to consider that as we, as part of our.
I would, I would just like to see some kind of plan on how we can start making some of these happen. Though we can't do them all at one time, I understand that. But I think we, we go with our students and our teachers. We can use these facilities, especially during summertime, we could, you could get some kids off the street and use some of these facilities for some good tools. When you have a cool place to play basketball or do something, then you just go into places. Ninety-five degrees and the door open, and the fans are blowing a lot of air, so, you know, but just start school, obviously, feel, pretty warm then too, so. I'd just like to say some kind of plan that we can start rolling a little bit more on, trying to get some air conditioning in some of these students. My thoughts.
Are you saying with the power, now you've got to figure, I don't say it's under seventy-five thousand, it's going to be much more than that, right? Any guess right now?
I was giving a map, I think we created the power at Burns High School for their well and that was, I think that was the project. You approved so, it's in excess of a thousand dollars.
In excess of a hundred?
Yes.
And there were?
These shelters and, you know.
So instead of a hundred and seventy-five, we might be facing two hundred and seventy-five. Right?
And every.
Or G M, I call them.
And, and every size will be different. One we looked at was at Burns High School, they do not have the power in that construction.
Well, are you saying that maybe Crest has enough?
No, I would think those two, their sister schools would be very similar. I mean, we've added the power, it's a critical area that Crest High and Burns High. And we, so we brought this up at the time that we had the power for the well in Burns High and the engineers that we had. That would not be the best, most economical way to add power in that area and then run through the building.
Uh, on, on your plans for your auditorium and adding those classrooms on that side? That would be a, a time to put the power in, that, it's right, it's right inside the door. But what is our plan down the road? Are we looking more into this, this auditorium and these classrooms for these high, two high schools, Burns and Crest?
Yeah, we've had, back at our previous works, actually, we had that particular number.
All right.
And that's, that's all we've done.
Do we need to be hollering at problems?
I'll be honest, I'm still, I have plenty of, to do follow.
Well, do we need to be hollering at problems? We holler at, we need to holler at them, if we, we can, we will. I don't have a problem.
Is your problem there on the hot seat? I mean, you getting all these questions.
Oh, I'm fine.
I was looking on there and there was one more. Put the Crest High School side, Bruton Utility Building, the fence, and then such football field, does that include the Crest box?
No, uh, that is a, a project that Mr. Bowden, we're partnered with the, the portion, well, the, the touchdown collective, uh, portion thing. And, uh.
How much do you?
Last year, we, we, they have only four years to be able to bear our college members, rise, home athletics. And to meet the, the health inspection requirements, there's some changes we need to make. And so Steve worked with that group, and we partnered together to have, you know, force the concrete, have covered area. Run some, run some power, do some things to, to help make that happen. That's just basically, I guess, updating, any better alcohol sessions, same there, it was, if you face first day, they're left.
Red Lux, but.
No, it's, again, another.
Just one question. Those two Crest boxes, they both go into terrible shit, bathrooms, and they definitely need to have some attention. But let's don't forget about North Shelby School, on top of that. These touchdown groups, I don't have a problem with. But we got to go forking out a bunch, and that's taking away from that air condition too. If we agree to help out on something there, and that's taking away from something else, and we, we've got plans on once a day too. Because just like over at King's Mountain, uh, the gentleman spent a lot of money at, at that group over there, they spent a lot. But how much Cleveland County had to come in and spend behind him to make that happen? Well, if you spend it there, then we can spend it, uh, at the, on these air conditions or, or that's just taking away. Or it takes a little bit to make a lot, uh, on, on these auditoriums.
And, Mr. Martin, I'll share with you, in this, in our philosophy of our team operations, that we did have people that come in and didn't want to partner with us. You know, whether it's, you know, the Barnes, Burns High, Crest High, did different things where people want to come in and partner with us. And we did try to partner with our communities and, and our supporters, and we've done that in the past. So like, that's a way to get community support, we, we partner if they should. And that's what we tried to do, so that's what the direction we've been, what we tried to do.
I think we're also partnering with, 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 and the boys and girls club out here, correct? I mean, if, without, without all of those people, we wouldn't be where we are today, this week.
Richard?
Mr. Chair, I apologize for allowing this discussion, I wanted to use two more things in real briefly, real briefly.
You mean, that's your final one?
Yeah, I, I thought it did, but I, I saw it oversight.
That's your middle name now, isn't it?
I know. Uh, and John, I'm getting ahead of this, and we, we want to get back and have some discussion. We talked about it previously, since we're doing the Shelby Middle School projects. And even in the, the participation during the, the student participatory, the discussion came up. And it just recently came up again around the state with some of these disparities that are going in this, in some school district. That addresses historic and unutilized businesses, hub businesses. And we talked about that data, you know, a year or two ago, and I just wanted to kind of get some updates on that. We're, I'm getting ready for another conference that's going to highlight hub participation across the state. And we're looking for information from respective school districts. So I want to get that, sit down and discuss that with you at some point. Don't want to pull over, but hopefully, in a proactive way, we can get together, gather those numbers in. And, Mr. Chair, I'll finally, I, I overlooked one important area. This is really directed at Dr. Lewis, because part of my meeting at the State Board, we had a, a meeting with the General Assembly. Some of the members of the General Assembly, and it was a home-based briefing, it was a home-based briefing, and of course, some of the discussions we had across the state about the distant, distant, uh, disenchanted with, with power school. And, and some of the tech, you know, technical issues with that. But during this briefing, they also talked about the homies being an umbrella to power school and school net, power school and professional development. And I was not aware, I'm learning how much I don't. And I was not aware, I'm learning how much I don't know when I go to some of these meetings, and that was a very, where so much focus on power school, that I wasn't as, in the form about, you know, the open class, the professional development, uh, and the school net, and some of those, uh, other area tech, technology, uh, tools and resources that we have. And I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to our board to maybe get a briefing on some of those things, assuming that we have all of those for homes here in this school district.
Mr. Rick, we do, and we, uh, just real quickly, their opt-in process, we are LA opt-in. We continue to use school net, home base is a major umbrella, it, it takes in power school, school net, open class, and treatment of floods.
Right.
And professional development, and so, yeah, that's at a future time we can definitely update you, uh, that's a combination of, of instructional, and, uh, student services data rate, where to keep.
Ryan, I thought it was so informative that I thought it would make it helpful for us to, so we get a briefing and kind of data.
Thank you, Richard, and, uh, Mr. Yarborough, thank you for, uh, I'm sure I speak for the board, we all know that you, you know, you have limited funds, and I admire you and your staff for doing the best we possibly can. Even though each one of us may want to do something a little bit for some area, you know, you do a good job, it's almost impossible to please everyone.
I agree with, uh, Dr. Hammack, and I'll say, I, as a parent of a child at King's Mountain High School who plays football, I have a problem going to the restroom during the football game. So I think we have facilities all over the county that need to be updated.
You saw that.
That's right.
People don't drink anything while you're there. Thank you, Chair, I agree.
I'll ask the item on the agenda before we get to our student transfer request, Dr. Fisher, you want to say anything about those, we've also looked at those.
Tashing, just making recommendations.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Fisher on student transfers?
Do we have any here, it's coming up?
All right, and, uh, Dr. Fisher, we're here to continue there once more, any of these related to athletics at the high school?
Not to my knowledge.
I make a motion when per the transfer, uh, request is recommended, uh, recommended by Superintendent.
Aye, sir.
Good move, and second, that we approved the transfer request recommended by Superintendent Dr. Fisher. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, that completes our agenda, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Sir, second?
Aye.
Please go up and leave.